Please be seated. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment reorganization meeting, January 16th, 2025. Dan, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Ms. Gomez is absent. Ms. Testaverde is absent. Mr. Victoria is absent. Mr. Singh?
Here.
And Ms. Sullivan.
Here. We don't have any official, we have official businesses this evening, but we're not going to have any applications that come before the board. We are going to have a special presentation by the mayor this evening. The only thing I would do first is we're going to seat the four persons for appointment and nominations and appointments for the chairperson, the vice chair, the secretary, and the vice secretary. So I'll open up at this point nomination for chairperson for the year 2025.
I'll nominate Jim Sullivan.
I'd second the nomination.
Nominated and second. Is there any other nominations for chairperson? Are there any other nominations for chairperson? I will close the nomination. Roll call on Mr. Sullivan.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Thank you, Board, for your confidence in me and allowing me to sit again for another year. We'll move on to the vice chair. I'd like to nominate Ms. Chevalier. Is there a second?
Second, Andrews.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. For secretary to the board, I'll accept the nomination.
I'll nominate Louis Izzo.
Mr. Izzo, do you accept that?
Yes.
A second.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. And vice secretary of the board, I'll nominate Maureen Puchelli.
Second, Andrew.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Mayor Walker, who's present in the evening here this evening, and she has a small presentation before we move forward with any other appointments.
Good evening. I just wanted to come tonight to tell all the volunteers on the board how appreciative we are for all that you do, for all the hours that you dedicate to the town for free of charge. And I just want to say that we're very pleased with all that you do for our town. I want to thank you on behalf of the residents, my administration, the town council, and of course, myself. So I have prepared some certificates of appreciation for each one of you individually. I'm just going to read the certificate. For your voluntary dedication and valuable service as a zoning board member, your time and commitment contribute to the betterment of our community, and your efforts exemplify the spirit of service. This certificate is presented to you on behalf of the mayor and business administrator of Olbridge Township.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you will be getting nameplates, too, to replace the paper ones. We're ordering them. We just had a way for the new board to be seated.
If I could quickly speak for the board, knowing each and every one of them, we're very proud to sit here. We take it as a civic duty, and we take it with responsibility. And we know what we're getting into, and we enjoy doing it for the better of the community, and certainly for the residents of this community. So we thank the administration for that acknowledgement.
Yeah. We appreciate all you do, because a lot of people don't realize that you're volunteers, and you give so many more hours than just the hours you sit up here, because you have to read all the paperwork, and it's very extensive. And we really do appreciate. We wish we could do more, but we have nice little certificates for you.
Thank you for taking time out of your day to say hello to us.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll leave them down here, and then if I forgot anyone, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Best of luck in the new year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to have a board attorney nomination. I'm going to offer one from the firm of Dusty McGuckin, McNichols, Connors, Anthony, and Buckley. Tonight, Gregory McGuckin is here. Would someone second the nomination for that firm?
Chevalier will second.
Good. Okay. Roll call, please, for that firm.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Absolutely. I'm going to welcome Gregory McGuckin to please come up and take his seat on the dais. We certainly welcome your counsel and advisor. Okay, we'll move on to the planning consultant nominations. I'm going to make the first one, environmental resolutions incorporated.
Chevalier will second.
Ms. Andrews?
Please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. We have one more?
I'll nominate Harbor Consultants.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Engineering consultant nomination.
Environmental Resolutions, Inc.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Andrews, yes.
You beat me to it. Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes.
Next nomination is Harbor Consultants.
That's for engineering consultant. Anyone want a second?
Second, Andrews.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. How about for traffic consultant nomination?
Environmental Resolutions, Inc.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. And finally, we have for the evening, we have forestry consultant nomination, and there is one. That's Chestnut AFS Arboretural Forestry Services. That's Mr. Gary Lavallo. Is there a second to that nomination?
Izzo?
I think Ms. Andrews beat you again.
Ms. Andrews?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Before we go on to the adoptions, I'd like to make one comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Scogno, who has served faithfully for the, as the secretary of the board. And if you've, if you think doing the reading is a lot, he's got to run into the building several times, probably a week, to do what he does. And every paper that you see is signed by him, along with every plan that I countersign. But he does twice the work that I do as far as signatures. So I don't know if your hand got tired, or, but thank you very much for all you've done.
Thank you.
And that was his choice to step down this, this year. All right, we have the rules and regulations for 2025. There has been no change since before '23, but for, for the sake of the board, there has been zero change since last year. So would someone move them for adoption?
One discussion, please?
Yes, by all means.
I, I read through the rules and regulations, and under one colon, one dash five secretary, you have assistant secretary listed. And here on, we have vice secretary. Why do you have assistant, and then you have vice?
It has been like this.
Yeah, I know, it has been. But the vice secretary is a higher position than assistant secretary. One should be changed. I believe this should be changed.
Okay.
The secretary is a nominated position, and a civilian. The vice secretary is normally a person that works for the township as an employee.
Right. But that's the same title.
Vice secretary.
No.
There, there's a different word in there you're saying.
Yes.
This one says assistant secretary instead of vice.
It should say vice secretary.
That's what we do on here. If, if we want to make a change to that, let's do it when we go into a regular meeting next time around.
Or we could, we could adopt it with that change.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The next meeting, why don't we do?
We could adopt it tonight with the change.
Okay. Would that would be your, what you're offering?
Yes.
Does everybody understand it?
Yes.
Counsel, there would be no problem doing that, right?
Not at all.
Okay.
Just want to be clear, you're going to change vice to?
No.
Out of the rules and regs?
We're going to get rid of assistant and make it vice.
Got it. No problem.
Okay. Certainly, on the advice of council, we can do this. I'll call, I guess that was your motion?
Yes, correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Chevalier will second it.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Okay. Having said that, now, could we go on to the adoption for the 2025 with that change? Someone want to move that?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Izzo.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Item five is minutes boards. That was December 19th, 2024. That was our last meeting of the 2024 year. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review them. Absent any comments or suggestions for additions or deletions, I'd ask someone to move them for adoption.
Chevalier will move it.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. And Mr. Izzo, get ready with that pen, because you'll be using it a lot this year. That is the, the sum of the business this evening. We have no one here to open a general public comment portion to. So I'll open it, and I'll close it, as there is no one here to make comments. Counselor, any, any comments to the board?
On behalf of myself, my firm, we really do appreciate the appointments this evening, and I think you'll find that our firm is very well versed in municipal land use law and municipal law. And we think you made the right choice, and we look forward to working with you all year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We, we do appreciate all the councils, any of the council and the guidance that has been here, and we look forward to working with you as well. So thank you for, thank you and your firm for being here with us. Ms. Sawant from the township, anything?
So, yeah, sure. Happy New Year.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much.
We know you were ill for a while. We know you were ill for a while. You look great. I'm glad to see you back.
Thank you. Thank you, and Happy New Year, Board. I just wanted to let you know that the zoning board is going to be super busy. We are already booked until July. We are booking into July, and all the meetings are full. None of the meetings are just one application. So we have multiple applications each night. So there will be some applications that will bleed into the next meeting. So it's tough. I have already started getting requests for special meeting, and I keep saying that the board already meets twice a month. It's going to be very hard to get a special meeting. But I just want you to know that there are some very interesting projects that are in the pipeline, and you're going to be busy.
We welcome the challenge. We always look for new applications. Before we leave, why don't I, before we go off TV, why don't I just hand each one of you those certificates? All right, that is the sum of the business this evening. Mr. Holleyhan, the next meeting is? January 30th, right?
Yes.
You are correct.
Okay. Board will reconvene on January 30th. We've done for our business for this evening. Happy New Year to those who watch us. Happy New Year to everybody here on the dais. I'll call for an adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Be safe getting home.